Okay, well, we are at 7:00. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. I guess we'll note attendance as it is. I still think Tom's probably coming. And we are going to begin, as always, for a regular meeting with the flag salute. Debbie, are you ready to share it like normal? I don't, I didn't ask you this.
Yes, I am. I'm getting it up here.
Thank you. Oh, it looks like Tom's joining right now. All right, well, we will begin. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
By the United States of America. And to the republic which stands.
Which stands.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, we do have a slightly revised agenda. I sent on a mail accordingly. I would accept a motion to approve the amended agenda with the slight changes from the previous
I move to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
I second it.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the amended agenda? Been moved and seconded without further discussion. I'll move us to a vote. All those in favor, well, let's go through. Debbie, why don't you go ahead and call out? Then we won't have a confusion.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Janet?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Shelley?
Aye.
And Irv. I think we lost him.
Yeah, I don't even see him in the list now.
Looks like.
Okay, well, motion passes. We will, we will proceed. We'll consider that an abstain, I guess. So, our first topic of discussion is to move into executive session under ORS 1926602F to consider information on records that are exempt by law from public inspection. So I guess, once you guys make sure that only those who are supposed to be here are here, we'll proceed.
And we're gonna have to do this manually a little bit because webinar's a little different, but Peter, Ray, Sarah, Leslie, Jody, Dawn, I'll need you to exit yourself.
Drew, Irv is trying to get back on. He doesn't know what happened.
All righty. I don't see him in the attendee list. And I, I do have Nancy here. Brian, is that Nancy? You're Nancy?
Not when I know of.
Okay. So, I'm going to Christian, David, Kim, Megan, and Nancy. We'll need you to exit and we'll start back up when.
Drew, can you remove me or do I need to exit as well?
I can remove you. Okay, and stopping recording or pausing. All right, you're live.
All right, perfect. Excellent. Okay, well, we're returning to open session. The, the action item six, decision of topic discussed in exec session has been tabled, so no action is necessary tonight. So, we are going to move on to the consent agenda where I will accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as published.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second it.
And seconded. Debbie, why don't you go ahead and run the, the roll call here, please?
Okay. Jonathan?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Janet, you there? We lost her. Tom?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Shelley?
Aye.
And Irv?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, motion passes. Next up, we begin the open hearing for the 2020-2021 fiscal year budget as part of the formal process. And I don't know, Paul, if you were gonna speak to that briefly or if Steve was?
No, there's really no presentation at this time, other than to just say we are, we're open right now for comment on the budget. Steve, do you have anything you want to add?
Let me bring Steve in. Here he comes. Sorry about that, Steve didn't mean to leave you hanging.
No, that's okay. Thank you very much. Hi, everybody. I actually did have a couple of things I thought would be good to, to add here. And maybe just an interest, the interest of efficiency and time, I thought maybe I could, since, since the few comments I had about some updated budget information would just go hand in hand with the financial, I could kind of just roll that in and that would then allow everyone to be kind of informed of the, of the updates before the, you know, the first public comment period. There'll be one later, obviously, but anyway, so the updates that I had basically are that we're still at the 9.0 billion funding level like we were when we met last in our third budget committee meeting. We still have that, that same official estimate, but as you probably have heard, you know, there's, there's been conflicting information about when the legislature may come in to look at the, the remaining budget hole that's there. It's the same as we had before. I believe Governor Brown stated that the legislature may be coming in this week to, to talk about some of the recent events, but that the, the last I had heard was that the, the budget part wouldn't be maybe addressed till later this summer, but you know, information seems to change each day. So, there's still, we're still waiting on that. So that really hasn't changed. But what I wanted to say is the adoption, the budget adoption resolution and the action items that's to adopt the 2021 budget to levy the taxes and make appropriations for the year is, is the same as what was proposed and approved with, with three small changes. So, the first thing is that I, I increased the projected ending fund balance or therefore the beginning fund balance resource for 2021 in the general fund from 2.8 million to 3.2 million based on additional savings. And there's a lot of push and pull going on there and I can explain more on that, but then to allocate those resources and then rebalance the budget, I did three, three things. One is I increased support services or major function 2000 on the expense side by $30,000. The reason for that is, again, we talk about the kind of the push and pull. Since the last budget committee meeting, we received our official final 2021 insurance package cost from PACE, property and casualty for education for our property and liability coverage. And unfortunately, the package increase was 22.8% over last year, which is an increase of $55,000. So it went up from $241,000 to $296,000. The last couple of years, we've budgeted 10 or 15%, and it's come below that. So we usually kind of below by about $10,000, but this year it went the other way. So I was under budgeted by $30,000. Even our insurance agent was surprised at that number, James Dooley. But we had two things that happened that kind of hit us at the same time. One is it was PACE's year to go out into the reinsurance market nationwide and the rates were, had increased quite a bit. But the other thing that happened was is we had an appraisal done on our, on our district, which, which happens every three or four years, and it was the first appraisal that we've had since our, most of our seismic projects were done and our Schleter repurpose and just increasing value of property in general. So basically, our, our property value went up by about 13% and therefore the, you know, we kind of had the rate hitting on one side and then the property value went up. So we kind of got hit with the double whammy there. That's, that's not great, but really, the, I think the thing that's maybe the most important update tonight also involves the insurance market. You, you may also have heard that basically many insurance packages, including PACE, are leaving both private companies and public entities at great risk for potential undue litigation due to COVID-19 related damages. And so, you know, that's, that's bigger than anything we'll talk about tonight because it doesn't matter if, you know, is our ending fund balance 2.8 or 3 million or 3.2 million? It's, you know, it's, it's about this, this massive risk that's basically being laid at the feet of many organizations. And so, I know that OSBA is actively working and they put together a, actually a, a letter to send to legislators when they come in this special session to address this issue. And it has the name of many private companies, but also OSBA. And so, this has all come up here in the last couple of weeks as well and it's, it's very concerning. So, we'll just have to, to watch that very closely. I may invite James Dooley to come and speak with us at the July board meeting if we feel that it's warranted at that time because there's so much going on in, in the insurance industry right now. So, in addition, so the, the other adjustments I made to balance the increase to the beginning fund balance was I increased the, the 4,000 series capital projects because, as you may know, kind of the last school that's spending down some reserves is Victor Pointe and they've been working on their covered play shed, play area and storage out there. And that's been a couple of years in the works and so they've been spending money over the last year, two years. Most of those expenses are happening now, but we found out last week that the delivery of the actual structure itself will not happen until around July 10th. So that means constructive receipt doesn't take place until the 2021 fiscal year and therefore the money that we thought would go out the door in June won't go out the door until July as well as the construction of that. So I've increased what was in this year's budget. I basically shifted it over to 4,000 series capital projects to account for that timing difference is basically what that is. And then lastly, the, the rest of the difference, I simply plugged into unappropriated ending fund balance. And so how, that's how the general fund then becomes rebalanced with a, with a $400,000 difference. There is no change to any other funds. So those are really the, the, the updates related to the budget. Really, the only thing that I, other than that, that I wanted to say is I kind of mentioned that there's a lot of competing issues going on, kind of positively from a financial standpoint and negatively. So for example, the CARES Act money was something we talked quite a bit about and we've received a lot more clarity on that over the last couple of weeks. So you had another webinar, not last Friday, but the Friday before. Our allocation has been finalized at $362,000, which again is based on the way they allocate Title I A dollars for the school districts. They just released the, basically it's, it's not a competitive grant, it's, but, but there is an application we have to fill out. Every school district has to fill out. That was released last Friday and it's due in three weeks on July 10th. And so we'll be working on that later this week and into next week. But basically, the, the key language, there's a lot of guidance on it, but the key, I guess the key general statement is, is that the local education agency must provide a description of how it proposes to enable students, teachers, and other program recipients to overcome barriers, including barriers based on gender, race, color, national origin, disability, and age that prevent equal access to or participation in the program. And there's a lot of guidance on the, on the last page of the document that relates specific to section 18003, the code in the, in the federal CARES Act. So, it could have anything to do with purchase of, you know, personal protective equipment, purchasing supplies to sanitize and clean facilities, coordination to prepare response with other agencies, coordinating with nurses, technology needs related to online learning, and it goes on and on. There's, there's 11 specific bullet points. So, our, our team will be getting together in the next few days to start working on this, on this paperwork. And basically, it's for costs between March 13th of this year all the way through, I believe it's September of 2022. To double check that. So that will help us because there are going to be some additional costs related to personal protective equipment and other items, things we've already incurred, the things that we will definitely be incurring as we move forward as well. In addition, Melanie in our department has done a great job of getting hooked up, get us approved with FEMA. And we've already had two exploratory meetings with the FEMA representative on the East Coast and then logged into their portal to be able to start entering costs that, that may qualify for FEMA recovery. And that's not maybe something that's maybe helping us so much at the end of this year as it will moving forward because it will be open-ended until the federal disaster is declared officially over. So that's something that could really help us and benefit us moving forward. The thing that really helped us in the near term with some of the extra supply costs was we received a $20,000 grant from SAFE. So that, that helped a lot, but the FEMA piece could really end up being beneficial. So those are some positive things that are happening to help us with the situation. The thing that may be pulling on the other side is, one thing that I had not thought of until recently was that because our nurses aren't able to work with students in the same way, for the last three and a half months of the school year, three months of the school year, it, it's, it's, it's going to prevent us from being able to claim Medicaid dollars that we do bill for. And that, that could cost us up to $150,000 for the last quarter of Medicaid claims. And that, that means that it's, it's possible that we may have some nursing costs and/or special needs assistance costs that are paid for out of a special revenue fund that are offset with Medicaid dollars and some other funding sources. And those expenses may have to come to the general fund, which would impact our, our ending fund balance. I already covered our insurance cost, of course. And then, you know, I've talked about the fact that we've saved quite a bit in substitute cost. The flip side of that is, is that at the end of each year, we pay out for unused personal leave time. And so usually, personal leave time is, is used up more heavily in the second semester than it is in the first semester. So obviously, since the middle of March, people haven't been using personal leave time and therefore we have a lot more personal leave time on the books to pay out at the end of the year. So, as you can see, there's things that are kind of competing back and forth and I just thought it was important to really provide the updates that we've, we've had over the last two or three weeks and just know that, you know, each day there brings clarity, but you know, there's still a number of question marks as well. So hopefully that helps.
Tremendously, thank you. It's, it was great, actually. I appreciate all the details and thanks for sharing. Okay, if there's no other questions for Steve, then I think we're going to move into our public comment. So, and of course, as we are now doing public comment differently, you know, we're gonna have to allow for some delays and let's see, it says, please email Debbie, ballaf underscore Debbie at silverfalls@k12.org.us. Hopefully you saw that if you are hoping to speak. I don't know, Debbie or Drew, is anybody lined up?
I'm checking right now. Did you catch that?
I did, thank you.
I don't have anything right now.
Drew, I, I saw my screen light up that someone had raised their hand. I don't know if that's to do public comment or not, but.
I didn't see one, but I'll, I'll check.
Okay, thanks.
Jonathan, I had raised my hand earlier because I wasn't presenter and I wasn't able to respond to you. I was waiting for rescue.
Right, right. No, I think it was somebody else, but yeah.
Still nothing, Jonathan.
Okay. Again, if that's your aim, we will have a second public comment, so please prepare and hopefully you'll get in, during the second one, if you didn't get in this time. Okay, we'll move into discussion items. Item A, policy review, next steps. So this is really a topic, it is a broad board topic. It's come up a number of times as, you know, a question and a concern regarding where we are with our policies in general. And, you know, this is just an opportunity for us to talk about sort of what we want, what we might expect. I'm not looking to solve the problem exactly here today, other than to start laying out ideas, make sure that the board is heard on the topic. And we'll be, of course, meeting with OSBA as well as other entities regarding training, probably in the next three months, right? So, you know, during that process, some of that may allow us to engage in a, in sort of a more formal review of policies. So, I'll leave that as the opening salvo and I guess I'll, I'll let, you know, guys weigh in with your thoughts. Yes, Lori, go ahead.
Yes, I'm very happy to hear that we're gonna look at potential other entities for our training and for continual education. I think it's much needed and I'm hoping and that the board also is open rather than just going to OSBA. I would like to have a little broader perspective on training sessions and, you know, how we incorporate that into our board to be more alert and to be more educated on topics. And especially with executive session, that has been a, that's a little bit ominous for me sometimes how we move in and how we move out. I know that the Ethics Commission offers training, that they would be willing to do that as well. I think that's something that the board can discuss further down the road and see how that looks, but I would like more understanding on that topic.
Yeah, it's definitely on the agenda for our summer or perhaps early fall training is to get executive session training. And I agree, it's an area that is very confusing. It's a lot of rules, a lot of laws. There's all kinds of sort of questions about what is and isn't allowed in and I think even among experts, there's apparently quite a bit of disagreement. So, you know, we do need to, you know, get additional training on that, for sure.
I was wondering also if the board would be willing to submit to you various policies or procedures that they feel that a little more clarity is needed as well. Some, some policies may just be a little murky and foggy, but others may just need a little more tightening. It just depends. But that's another idea that I think would be good for the board to do.
And I'll, I'll agree, right? I think we do need to look at it, especially if, if any of you have questions or concerns about a particular policy, we need to kind of line up a list and we need people to.
We do.
Maybe it's one person on the board, maybe it's multiple people, maybe individual board members who have a pet policy they'd really like to revisit could bring that to the board and discuss the concerns that they have with it. I think what often happens is we sort of broadly make, make statements, I'm guilty as anybody, of saying, you know, we ought to review that policy someday or we ought to review policies in general, but I don't think we have a very organized approach to it. I think it'd be useful to, to kind of create a list. You know, recently, there was a pretty significant review in general of policies. So I don't know how far out of date they are, but out of date is only relative perhaps to OSBA guidance and it's, it's our policy. And so if there's a policy that's problematic or confusing or, you know, just you want to revisit, I, I think any board member should feel free to, to bring it up as a concern.
I know one of them for me would be, and then I'll refrain, I don't want to take up all the time, but the board meeting agenda, I, I would love to see that prepared a little bit more in advance. I know changes occur. However, I've noticed, and maybe this is the ebb and flow of the agenda, but I've noticed changes at the last minute and, and more things added. And so I don't know how the rest of you feel about that, but I know that we have a policy on that. I think it's BDDC or something regarding the board agenda. It might be, it would, might be good for this board to revisit it and see how we want that to look for us. There you go.
Any other board members with comments or thoughts on this topic?
Can you hear me, Jonathan?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. I had to move to phone. I apologize. I kept losing our Zoom connection and so I'm now on the phone and so I can't raise my hand and can't see anyone. I, I appreciate your, your conversation and I'm right there with you guys. I'm wondering if we can have a, talk for just a minute about our process. So maybe over the next two to three months, we could, as you had suggested, Jonathan, bring individually, bring policies to the board to suggest that they be, you know, reworked, revisited, just discussed. And, and then like you said, come up with a list of them. I think you're right that we, we don't need to do a complete revamp of all of them. But I think in each of us sort of flipping through them and seeing which ones we have But I think in each of us sort of flipping through them and seeing which ones we have felt have been sticky in the past, I think we'll have done a reasonably good review just in doing that. And I think if we came up with a list of a dozen of them, you know, even if that, I agree, I think there are some that we're just bear taking a look at for tightening language.
Sure. Yeah, I totally agree. And I'd be happy to either be the keeper of that list, that ongoing list, or if a board member would like to kind of become the keeper or appoint person for it, I would happily delegate as well.
I'll be the keeper.
Fair enough, I will happily accept.
Okay, let somebody else feels that they would like to be involved. So I would be happy to.
Okay.
That would be great, thank you, Lori.
Thank you, Janet and Jonathan. Okay.
Okay. Any other topics from any board member, I mean, conversation on this topic from any other board members? Okay, moving us along, we are now going to be discussing the charter school contracts, and there are two of them up tonight. And Paul?
Sure, thank you.
You're up.
Thank you, we have the Bethany Charter School contract and the Community Rich Charter School contracts, both are up for renewal. The board has already authorized renewal, now we're just ratifying the contract. So I want to thank Chair Edmonds and Member Allenak for working on these with me with the respective charter schools. So real quickly, they are both renewing for five-year terms. And we had a process, we met with their representatives, their respective school board members, and went through the contracts. These were also reviewed by Kristen Miles from OSBA. And we also had a final legal review of both the contracts before they came before you tonight for approval. I am recommending the approval of both of these. On the Bethany Charter, one of the, there's a little bit of a difference between the two contracts, they're very, very similar, first of all, but there's a little bit of difference in that with the Bethany School, they are occupying, and there is a lease on that because they use our school building. So one of the differences that we just cleaned up in the contract is that there was some language in there that was incongruent, so we cleaned up that, and we are now going to pay the property insurance for the building that we own. And they have agreed to keep up on the maintenance of that building. The flow-through on both the charters has been 80% and the district retains 20%. With that 20%, the district provides a variety of services, the most expensive of which is the special education, but we also provide fiscal services and payroll services and that kind of thing. On the renewal, the community root schools renewing at 80% pass-through, and the Bethany contract is renewing at 81% flow-through. And again, that little 1% difference is kind of wrapped up in the difference with the, them occupying our building and that part of the package. So again, my recommendation is for the board to renew both of these contracts. I really appreciated the spirit with which all parties came to negotiate on these contracts, and we should feel, we should feel good about those contracts. Any questions?
So I don't have a question, but I want to thank you for spearheading it. I know personally how much time you spent even just on the Bethany one, and of course, I have every reason to believe you spent a lot of time on the other one as well. So, thank you. It was a really productive series of conversations, it was meaningful, I know they felt heard, and I shouldn't say I know, I believe that they felt heard. I know it was really a great back and forth conversation the whole way. Okay, any board members have any questions at all? All right, moving on to item D, other items, any, anybody have any other items? Okay, move into 11 Administrator and Staff Reports. And Mr. Bush, you are up first.
Good evening, hope everybody is doing well out there. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit tonight about the School Resource Officer, and this is in response to concerns across the country and locally related to law enforcement and specifically related to school resource officers. And so to me, this is the first of hopefully several conversations about what law enforcement presence looks like in our schools. And so today or this evening, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about some history and some evolution that we've seen over the years in the SRO program. And then again, finishing off with, you know, how do we engage our community in reviewing or learning more about and reviewing the SRO program? And again, with the idea of what does a police presence look like in our schools? So again, starting with a little bit of a history, the SRO, Silverton funded the SRO program or person for about 15 years. It initially began at Mark Twain Middle School and responded to calls at the middle school and high school. The city stopped funding it in 2012 and reinstated it in 2016, and it's a shared, it's shared between the district and the city with it pretty much being split by during the school year, the school district supports the person, and the other part of the year, the city supports it. I want to call out something, though, what I said in the first sentence that I read there, you know, when it started, it, the SRO would primarily respond to calls at the middle school and high school. And one thing, and I'm going to kind of put my, my building administrator hat on that I held, not in Silver Falls, but in other districts that, you know, I think if you would have looked back 15 years ago at the SRO program, you would have seen a much more of a deterrent model of, and a responsive model, in so much that it was the officer in uniform presence, it was responding to calls. And I think what you, what I have seen over the years, it is a much more, it's a lot less reactive to calls and a much more proactive relationship building process. And the officer isn't there in uniform to be, you know, using that uniform as a position of power necessarily, but is there to partner. And so I really think that's an important distinction that I have witnessed over the years, and in talking to Silverton High School where the SRO primarily works out of, they echoed that, that the officer's role in today's SRO program is a much more, is a much more collaborative approach with students, with families. And so on that note, you know, I'd like to talk a little bit about what you would, what we look for in, with our SROs and kind of some of the roles they play. And so first and foremost is, is working relationships with students. We want our SRO to be someone who is building relationships with our students. The other things that you might see them at is being available at different sporting events, dances, parades, things where their knowledge of kids, knowing kids and interacting is a really big win for our community to where, you know, having an SRO there who knows students, who's interacted with students on a daily basis can really be a benefit for the community and for those kids. And, you know, sometimes an officer who may not be, and I am not a police officer expert, don't want to say anything disrespectful there, but an officer who may not be used to working with middle and high school age kids may respond to student behavior, but a SRO is more likely to have a skill set working with kids who may be on that borderline of making some poor choices about how to interact with them. So I think there's a lot, there's a real strong proactive approach there that can happen. The SRO is able to provide education, safety issues, related drugs, driving, other topics like that. I think the interplay that they have with other agencies is really huge, and probably something people do not really realize how much the SRO is going to interact with DHS types of reports, our threat assessment team. So a student makes a statement that poses a risk to school, that SRO is at the table in making a determination of how we keep our schools safe. They play a real strong integral role with that. They're part of the CIRK team, which is the Sexual Incident Review Committee, and other teams that their knowledge about students and their knowledge about kind of the systems, the agencies that are out there is incredibly important. And so the fact that they can go in between some of those is huge. DHS alone, in terms of reporting abuses and things like that, you know, sometimes getting a hold of DHS can be challenging and being able to utilize that SRO to do well checks on kids and making sure kids are safe is a really valuable resource. You know, I think one of the things to note, and that's been brought up, and is that, you know, our current SRO is transitioning out of the SRO role. I know that that's a concern for some because Officer Lamro has been an outstanding person and has the trust of a lot of folks. One thing to note is that he will be the SRO until a transition to a new SRO is able to be put in place. And so that transition, we, you know, we're, we believe is going to go really smoothly and that JJ, Officer Lamro, will be working as our SRO and until we, one is selected and during the transition. You know, so what, you know, some of the things we'll be looking for in that, and I think another important note is the city wants our voice at the table in the selection of the new SRO. They realize that that skill set of working with kids is a unique one, and, you know, looking for someone who has great communication skills, interpersonal skills to work with students, work with staff, really be inclusive of all students and their families is, you know, at the forefront of, you know, what we'll be looking for in an SRO. We want somebody whose decision-making skills is putting the safety of students at the primary. It, you know, the law enforcement side is important, but, you know, we want, we want an officer that sees a kid. And I think that that's, you know, when we go to the table with Silverton Police Department, we're looking for that person that really sees their service to kids as being why they're applying or placed in that position. You know, a last couple of things that I think that are, that are important to emphasize is, and it goes along again with the interpersonal skills, is we want an SRO that's really effective at de-escalating situations with students. That's a skill set. We want an SRO that can interact with families, welfare checks when necessary, those are, those are vital to make sure kids are safe. And ultimately, we want an SRO that builds trust with our police department and our students. I think that's, that is something that I have seen students benefit from, of having a healthy and respectful inner relationship with their SRO is really important. So I know some of the concerns out there, I've already mentioned that the high school will be a part of that interview team. Again, this is just a first-place starter in terms of, I think, sharing about the role of the SRO within our community. So I think we could always do a better job in that area. And I think that, you know, the times call for us to share and also respond to if there's concerns within our community regarding the SRO. So I think that we want to listen to our community as well, is if there are any concerns about, you know, what does law enforcement presence in our school look like? I think that, I think that's, parents ought to know that, and we ought to be sharing that. So again, the first of probably several conversations related to the role of the SRO in our schools.
Yes, Jennifer.
Dan, you might not know the answer to this question, but it's a question I asked to Paul earlier today. In thinking about the protocol for hiring the new SRO, I'm wondering about any kind of, I guess, again, the word protocol or screening regarding attitudes and, I guess, skills in dealing with people who are non-white, people who are, you know, students who are black or Latinx. I'm just wondering if there is a part of the process that, that addresses that issue?
Yeah, I'm noting that down, Jennifer. I think we're still early in the process in terms of communicating with the city, but I think that's great. I think, you know, when we go to work in these kind of positions, I think having student voice at the table, I don't know if it's possible to get a couple of the students from groups that, you know, maybe sometimes have felt marginalized, or we can bring them to the table and have them participate in that. I think that's a great experience for kids, I think their voice really matters. So thank you for bringing that up. I don't have the specific answer to that, but I think we can make, definitely make sure that we're listening to the kids and also making sure, and I think the deeper question you probably brought up right at the beginning is, is screening for, for the attitudes? And I think that's a deeper level HR piece within the police department, but one that we shouldn't forget about.
Jonathan, I have a question, this is Janet.
Yeah, go ahead.
Actually, let me just make one comment about what you had just mentioned, Jennifer. I would imagine that those folks would all have some sort of, you know, cultural sensitivity, racial sensitivity training or something like that. I would hope, I would hope that they would, that that could be a question that we could ask in terms of their own training, what they've already had access to. But my question, Dan, is more of a sort of a technical one. If you wouldn't mind, help me understand, I'm not familiar with the position, is this someone who is an employee then of the police department or an employee of the district? Because we seem to be pulling them from the police department, but what, where do they, where do they land? Can you help clarify that arrangement? I'm unclear as to how that works.
Yep, they are a police department employee, the police department will be the ultimate hiring person for this position. And, you know, I guess a ballpark estimate is that we reimburse the city about 75 to 80% of their, their costs for that person. I think we pay all the payroll costs for that person during the months that school is in session, and then we don't pay during this, when school is out of session. So, so we reimburse the city for, for those funds, but the person reports to the, to the police, Silverton Police Department, it's their employee.
Okay, okay, good to know, thank you.
It's a contracted position with the city.
Okay.
Yes, Jennifer.
Another question, and this might be, I don't know, I'm just going to ask, I wonder about evaluation, because I'm assuming that the police department is the ultimate employer evaluator of the SRO. But how does the district give input into any professional growth or evaluation program?
Yeah, and I don't know those questions, and I will, I will get those as far as that role. I think, not sure how long, you know, JJ's been doing it for a few years in terms of that role. You know, I can, I can speak to, you know, in my previous district, as I did reach out to captains and whatnot during things, or, you know, if things needed to be debriefed, I, you know, we did not hesitate to, to bring other people to the table to say, what can we learn about that situation to, so people get better? I hope that we're doing that and debriefing those tough situations sometimes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Bush?
Just for clarity's sake, it's about a $90,000.
You're still muted, Steve, okay.
Just for clarity's sake, just, just so people know, it's about $90,000 per year for the district.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan, anything else from you tonight?
Nope, that's. Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Hannan, you are up next with the Youth Truth Report.
Awesome. Okay, this is going to be fun because I feel like us as a district staff and you guys have a board, as a board, have been doing a lot of reacting to things outside of our control recently, and we haven't gotten to do a lot of the work that we intentionally set out to do, like listening to our students and learning from their perspectives and working on that strategic plans. So tonight, we get to do just a little bit of that work, which I was really excited about doing today, and I hope that you guys are excited about it as well. We're going to go on a little roller coaster of highs and lows from the first look at our Youth Truth data from our student survey. So Drew, do you, are you able to put the PowerPoint up?
I can, but you also can share your screen. Yeah, you sent it to me, so that's fine. We can do that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't have it up. I was not prepared to do that.
I'm, I'm on it. Here it comes.
Awesome. Thank you so much. So I will just say, we're going to start tonight with gratitude. Feedback is a gift. So thank you for everyone on our school staff who took the time to administer it, for all of our teachers and families and students who took the time to fill it out. I have literally hundreds and hundreds of pages of data to help us move through the next year at least. So as a learning organization, we want to hear from those that we serve and we're very grateful for feedback. So thank you. Go ahead and head down to slide three, if you would, Drew. So the student perceptions are empirically linked to academic outcomes. So we need to know what our students are experiencing. And in addition to that being a research-backed thing to do, we just believe it's the right thing to do. We want to hear from those that we serve about what's working and what's not from their unique perspectives. And you're going to see some unique perspectives, some fascinating stuff. We also need to look at this to help us assess the needs in our district community so that we can better target resources for our strategic plan and our goal setting, and then measure the effectiveness of the actions that we're taking toward those goals. Who did we hear from? We had over 3,500 participants in our Youth Truth survey. You can see the breakdown there, about 306 of our staff members, almost 900 of our parents, and 2,362 of our kiddos in grades three through 12 helped us with this information. So the themes, the core themes of the survey, and we're only going to take a look at one of these tonight, so don't feel overwhelmed right off the bat, but I just thought this is fascinating, that these are the categories across which we can compare perceptions of our students, our families, and our staff. And in some areas, they align quite nicely, and in some areas, you're going to see really big discrepancies. I think just at first glance, the biggest discrepancy I saw was a, was an 86% positive response from one subgroup and a 21% positive response from another. So we've got differences in perceptions on how well it's going in some of these categories that are that wide. So that alone gives us great feedback to the work we need to dive into next year and what our priorities should be. So these things in the Youth Truth survey do measure what research says matters most in creating the high performing schools. These themes like engagement, culture, and relationships are essential for understanding a school's climate and culture. And if you recall, the goal area number two in our strategic plan is around the social emotional learning skills, all wrapped into that school climate and culture work. Tonight, we're going to take a look at the core themes from the feedback of our secondary students. I always like to start with the students. I don't, their, their voice, they sometimes give us the most unique insight. And and I think as we wrap up this distance learning and look at what is happening coming up in the fall, that listening to what our students say our strengths and our challenges are is a really great opportunity that we have right now as we wrap up and launch into the next phase. So if you can see there, the areas that our secondary students were able to give us input in are listed on your screen. Engagement, academic rigor, relationships, culture, belonging, academic services, environmental and mental health, school safety, which we just talked about a bit, student leadership and voice, and college and career readiness. So we now have lots of student feedback, both in statement and in positive or negative perception ratings on all of these areas. And we can compare our ratings to schools just in Oregon, schools that are suburban, schools that are urban, schools that have higher or lower socioeconomic, schools on a national level. We can filter all of those different ways to look at it. We can filter our student voice through race, gender, grades, socioeconomic, lots of different filters. So this tool really allows us to dig in and ask the right questions, I think, as to what our students are getting at and what we need to hear from them. So just a 10,000 degree view, we came out right about here. So our executive summary put us at our highest rating compared to participating high schools. Our highest rated areas were belonging and peer collaboration and culture. That's where our students rated us the highest. And then compared to other participating high schools, our lowest rated themes were engagement and academic rigor. So we'll do a deeper dive into both of those through the school year, this upcoming school year. So let's look at them. This is, now, now we're getting on the roller coaster that I previously alluded to you about some highs and lows from this high school student survey data. So some of our bright spots are that 72% of our kids rated positive, which means that they rated either I agree or I strongly agree of how many of your teachers are willing to give you extra help if you need it. That's a really strong number headed into a model that we're going to have to face in the fall. So the fact that our students feel supported that strongly is a great place to start that work. On the flip side of that, over in our Priority for Change column, we've got 21% positives that teachers make an effort to understand what life is like outside of school. Now, remember, this was done just in the weeks prior to the closure. So I do wonder if that would be different now, that our teachers have been kind of beaming into kids' homes and experiencing our students and their families in different ways. But just prior to the closure, only 21% of our kids indicated that they felt that teachers made an effort to understand what their life was like outside of school. And then back over to the bright spots, 86% positive response on that our teachers believe that you can get a good grade if you try. That's a beautiful number, right? The 86% of our kids said they either agree or strongly agree that their teachers believe that they can be successful. That's a great number. On the flip side, 36, we landed, our school landed in the 36th percentile for college and career readiness as rated by our students, and that's a broad category. So the college and career readiness, I listed it this way because it covers a few questions that make up that average that put us at the 36th percentile. And the 36th percentile means we are rated higher than only 36% of the other high schools that participated. So that's not a strong number for us. That's going to be a priority for change. The questions in that category that kids were responding to were, my school helped me develop the skills necessary. That was our strongest rating. My school helps me understand the steps I need to take in order to apply for college. My school helps me figure out which careers match my interests and abilities, and my school has helped me understand the steps I need to take to have the career I want. Those are the ones that, that group of questions, we came in pretty low. Swinging back over to the bright spots, we rated really high in, I can tell my teachers understand the subjects that they are teaching. Our kids believe our teachers are experts, and they are. So that's a, a strong rating in that category, higher than state and national average in every question in that grouping. We all, we came out low, though, in the group of the work I do in my classes really makes me think. That one was a particular concern to me as we head into a hybrid model, because that won't work in a hybrid model. The work that we're going to ask kids to do when they're off site and away from us has to be work that really engages their thinking, or they won't grow from it. It cannot just be practice work. So that will definitely be a priority for change right away in the fall. And we have a whole nother roller coaster slide there, Drew, if you'll flip it. So some more bright spots, this one made me personally happy. And this one is specific to goal area two in the strategic plan, that our emotional and mental health percent positives were higher than the state and national average for all subgroups and on every question. That's awesome. I think it's reflective of the work our high school staff has done for several years in this area. But some of the numbers are not as strong as we would like them to be. We want for that strategic goal number two, our goal is 100%, right? 100% of our students graduate with the social emotional skills that they need to navigate their world. That's what that category is about. So the questions that they rated in that category were these. When I'm feeling upset, stressed, or having problems, I know someone outside my school I can talk to. Same question about inside the school, I have someone to talk to. Same question of there are programs or services at my school that can help me with that. And then when I'm feeling upset, stressed, or I'm having problems, I know some ways to make myself feel better or cope with it. I just want to draw attention to the fact that 70% of our students said they agreed or strongly agreed with that. 70% of our kids in our high school are reporting that they have coping skills to deal with the stressors that are being thrown at them. That's a really strong number compared to national average and state average both in every category, in every subgroup. But that has to be 100%, right? It's not okay to send 30% of our kids out without reporting that they feel strong in that area, but that's a strong score. Flipping over to the Priority for Change column, we have student voice indicators that are lower than state and national average in all areas. And overall, in our student voice survey, this is the area that we had the lowest rating with a ninth percentile. So certainly, that's going to be a priority for change right away. A ninth percentile, again, means that we only were rated higher than 9% of the high schools that participated in the survey. So we're going to have to take a closer look at that one. Back on over to the bright spots, though, student safety was rated higher in every category and every subgroup than the state and national comparisons in every question. And I think, you know, as we have the discussion about our school resource officer, that that's a consideration, that our kids feel safe in our schools and in our community on their way to and from, and ask them specific questions, classrooms, hallways, locker rooms, bathrooms, transit to and from school. So we have some very specific data on that. On the flip side, though, the bullying and harassment, kids that, that report that they experienced bullying and harassment in our high school, it came in at 13%, which this is, those of you who've been around for a while, engaged in this work with us, this is like our attendance number that we pour effort into and it doesn't move. It's so frustrating because that's the national average dead on. So we have obviously put some tremendous efforts into this one, and that number hasn't moved. So we have, we have more work to do in that area. Back over to the other side, though, let's end on a really strong one. We're at the 85th percentile, meaning nationally and the state of Oregon, that we're rating higher than 85% of the high schools that participated for this statement. Adults at my school tried to stop bullying and harassment. That's a standing ovation for our high school staff, right? That almost, that 85% of our kids feel like the adults in that building are standing with them, standing against it. And then over to the priorities for change, I don't, I don't know, these are some more questions we have to ask. This is one we have to dig into a little bit because it did, in the academic rigor section of the survey, it asked kids to rate different resources that they use to help them be successful in our high school. And 86% of our white students said that AG was their most effective resource that they used to help them be successful, but only 71% of our black students said the same, and only 66% of our Hispanic students said the same. So I just have some questions about, is that an anomaly? Or is that, are we gearing our AG programs, our AG groups in a way that we need to take a look at? So those are questions that we'll dive into more this year. So next steps for us, we're going to continue to share survey results throughout the next school year, as well as how those survey results are being used. We're going to pull out at a district level what we're going to use for those baseline numbers for the strategic plan goal area two, and really get to work in an intentional way on moving those needles in those areas. It's going to be interesting. I, like, in some ways, I feel like it was great that we got this survey in right before the closure. In other ways, I think, like, will it be an apples to apples comparison? Because the, the year that we will survey kids in again is going to look so dramatically different than what they were surveyed on before. But we have what we have, even, even if we're surveying them on a different school experience next spring, we have really great data to, to do our work coming up for this fall. And then the building leadership teams will pull data points related to the strategic plan and their school improvement plans, and they will get to work with goal setting and action plans in those target areas. Wasn't that more fun than the work that we are, that we've been doing lately? Go ahead and flip to the next one there, Drew. So I'm going to ask you to think about, and it's not, I don't know how late we are, you could just think about this and then bump it to the next meeting if you want, or Jonathan could take some feedback on it now, but we would say, what are your amends, epiphanies, questions, and feedback? What'd you like? What'd you learn? What'd you, what, what do you wonder? And what do you suggest? Would you like to send them with those questions, Jonathan? Or would you like to allow some discussion on that now?
Well, I, I would entertain if anybody has any specific questions or comments that would seem reasonable. I also think people ought to have the opportunity to kind of get back with some of these. I will say, I really appreciated you sharing the data. It is, you know, insightful and really exciting to hear some of those bright spots especially. Thank you.
I guess I'll just weigh in. Thank you for doing this Youth Truth. I'm really excited that we took the plunge and decided to do it. I, the thing that I think sticks out to me the most just after the first view is the student voice data. And I think that I will be interested in, in seeing what the strategies are to address the student, the student voice.
Yep, very good point. Anybody else have questions?
Yeah, quick question. Jennifer, did you say, Jennifer Hannan, I should be more specific, did you say you guys are going to do this, this survey regularly? Is this a, would this be an annual thing so you can see how those numbers shift over time? Or did I not hear that correctly?
Well, Janet, that was the plan when, you know, financial times were good in the last fall. So it's, that's our hope. But of course, you know, moving forward, it is, you get what you pay for, right? This is a tremendous tool, and it gave us tremendous information, but it is spendy. So I'm hopeful that we'll either be able to fund it or we'll find a grant to help us fund it, because I do think it's meaningful for just the work that we're doing and improving the experience for our kids. And, and we know that research says that what the experience is for our kids translates into how successful they are in our schools and, and moving through our schools and beyond our schools. So that's why, that's part of our strategic plan work. So that's our hope.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I imagine that there could, I suppose, if it's, if it's really financially prohibitive, I, I suppose there would be ways of drilling down into some of those areas that you highlighted, those areas of improvement, and maybe focusing on capturing better feedback just on those. I don't know if that's probably not necessarily less expensive, but, you know, I suppose that could be another way to make sure we're at least tracking the information in the most important areas, rather than surveying things that we already know are, are pretty good, you know?
Right, right. Right, right.
I guess I'll just, in response to Janet, just chime in. My personal feeling is that the student experience is what we're all about. This is what, I mean, I love Jen's, your attitude about this, that this is going to be fun because the ideas that we're getting at what students perceive. And so, I mean, we do have to have a balanced budget. I totally get that and there are trade offs. But to me, this information is, you know, if we use it well, it's really invaluable. So probably worth it.
Money loss.
I agree, definitely. Thank you for all that work. I appreciate it. I think this is great information.
It is my pleasure. I go, it's like what I do in my spare time. These reports are awesome.
It aligns nicely with the strategic plan too, right? So, you know, we prioritize spending based on that plan. And this is clearly something that would be easily justifiable based on that same plan. So I, yes, of course, keep it, we'll have to see what happens this year with budget, but yes, thank you.
Yeah, certainly that this, this tool was intended to help us assess our strategic plan to give us that baseline data and then to track our progress moving forward.
Right. Okay. Well, with that, thank you. And I think we will move into the financial report. Although Steve, I think you alluded you weren't necessarily needing to share more, so.
Yeah, nothing more than that. I think I covered the points that I think were most pertinent for the evening.
Okay. Did any board members have any questions for Steve? Okay. We'll move into our superintendent report. This will be Paul's last one, and I want to say thank you in advance for a really amazing year. You've been fantastic to work with, and I appreciate all you poured into the district over this year. Thank you.
It's been my pleasure. And I guess I'm really just kind of proud. Jen, Hannan, thank you. That was an awesome report. Thank you for putting that together. And thank you for doing more of that in the future. I guess I just want to, since it is my last meeting with you all, I kind of wanted, you know, I don't have a typical reporter, but I do have sort of a reflection that I thought I would share with you. And I'm glad to be following Jen because it's about students. And so I guess I want to sort of end my time with you tonight by repeating some thoughts that I shared with our staff back in August. Kids these days are awesome. And we work for them. We work for the families that our kids will grow up to support. We work for the businesses that our kids will someday invent. We work for the families that our kids will grow up to lead. And any personal responsibility and leadership that will see our kids in their future through the adversities and hardships that will certainly come, like we're all experiencing here recently. So I guess I want to build on that message that I shared in August by pointing out that our kids have something to say about what's happening in our world. And we do well as adults to hear the truth and wisdom in the voices of our kids. If we'll listen, we may hear things that cause us discomfort, but that's okay. Because that means we're growing. So I'm proud that we started this year off by giving kids the microphone on the stage in August. And I'm proud that we're ending this, this year, my time with you by seeking their voices in the youth truth survey. And so I'll leave you with my reflection that our best moments together this year were when kids were either in front of us or were at the center of our discussion, like tonight. So keeping the focus on the needs of kids worked for our equity team this year. And we saw that work bring a lot of meaning to other conversations. So with that, I just want to say thank you to the school board, to the entire staff of the Silver Falls School District, and all the students, the parents, and the community members for letting me be part of the Fox family this year. Thank you.
Thanks. Any board members?
Thank you, Paul.
Paul, thank you so much for being there when it always hasn't been easy. Thank you again so much for everything you did for our kids. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to jump in here quickly and just thank you, Paul, for your, I should identify myself. This is Janet. Thank you for your leadership this year. It's not an easy job under the best of circumstances. And this was a, this was a heck of a year. And so certainly appreciate your leadership, appreciate all the work you did for our equity policy. That was just an amazing achievement. And putting things in place, like our facilities committee, I just appreciate how much you pulled community members into those processes so that there would be longevity, so that there would be a way to continue those efforts after your departure. And I think that was very generous of you and very smart. And I appreciate you putting our strategic plan at the center of your work and doing what you needed to, to move that forward during your tenure. So thank you so much, and certainly we will miss you and wish you the very best.
Yeah, Paul, thank you. Thank you very much for, you, it was a difficult year and you did, you did a lot of heavy lifting for the district. And thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, deeply appreciated your guidance through a very interesting year, my first year. Obviously, your first year as well, but thank you again for all that you did navigating that very interesting waters that we've been through with COVID and everything. So thank you.
I was surrounded by a really good and talented team of people, by the way.
Paul? Can you, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. We talked earlier on the phone today, so I just wanted to thank you again for everything that you've done here. I wish you the best.
Thanks, Shelley.
Okay. Well, thanks again. Really appreciate it. We are moving next into our SFEA presentation. And I don't know if Michelle is on board or not yet, Drew.
Let me move her over just a second. Here she comes. Michelle, you want to check your microphone there?
Hi, guys.
And your camera. Go ahead, try your camera. Hey, there you go. Looks good.
Yeah. All right, well, thanks, you guys, for having me on the agenda tonight. I don't have a lot to say tonight, but just a couple of things to update you on from SFEA. First of all, obviously with, with where we are right now, just as, as a nation with COVID and with all of the Black Lives Matter movement going, going forward, equity has been a big conversation piece amongst a lot of our teachers right now. I've been a part of a lot of different conversations, either on Facebook or in person. I was really, really impressed by the work that our kids did at the demonstration here in Silverton. Couple of weeks ago, I was able to attend. I saw a lot of our educators there, a lot of our administrators there, and just an awesome turnout. So I just wanted to publicly, you know, say that our kids did a fantastic job. And so from that, we, we've been having conversations amongst SFEA leadership with, with other members, just talking about how we can really, really get behind the district's equity work that's already being done and just find ways to partner and support those efforts in our own classrooms. And, you know, we're, we're talking about different conversations that need to take place, trainings that would be really helpful for our teachers just to have a better understanding of how we can really support our students of color and make sure that they are having the best experience possible in our schools. And so, you know, there's, there's a lot. To me personally, it just, it feels like I'm, I'm learning new information all the time and really just wanting to improve my own practice and improve my own understanding of how I can be an ally and a support to my students of color. And so we're really looking forward to, to, to looking, or to finding opportunities to, to really reach out and, and work with the district equity team and just figure out how teachers in our classrooms can really support these efforts and do the best work that we can for those kids. So that's kind of one thing that's been really prevalent in our thoughts and conversations. And then I guess the other big thing is just moving into the summer. And this will be the first, first time in a long time that, well, ever really, that teachers are just not entirely sure what to expect when we come back to school in the fall. And I just want to say that Dan's been giving me some insight as to the planning. But, you know, teachers definitely are interested. And I've heard that several schools are establishing their own reopening committees. Heard from several teachers who are participating in those. I'm planning to participate in that for my own building. And so I think, you know, as much as teachers would love to just kind of enjoy our summer, I think that there really is a lot yet to do and to learn and to figure out. And so from our perspective, our contracts, you know, anything that's a change in working conditions is something that has to be bargained with the union. And so we are working together with the district for, you know, any, all the things that come up that include a change in working conditions, which is a lot. And so that's kind of something that we will be keeping in touch with district leadership on in the coming days and weeks. So, so yeah, I mean, there's just, there's, there are a lot of questions. There's a lot of anxiety in our teaching staff, just in the uncertainty of what to expect. But I think if we can all work together, then it's going to be, it'll be interesting, but we'll be able to figure out what we can do to best support our students through this, this crazy unprecedented time in history. So, so yeah, that's, that's pretty much what I wanted to share. I would also like to say thank you to Paul. Thanks for stepping in to this position. It's, it's been a crazy year. Like you, I've said this multiple times, you couldn't make this stuff up. So thank you for, for your role this year. And I see that Scott Drew is, is on too. And I just want to say we're really, you know, we're looking forward to starting our time with you as well, Scott. And just really appreciate the work that you're putting in and getting, getting to know our district before you actually start. So thank you for that. And yeah, that's, that's my report for tonight.
Thank you, Michelle. Really appreciate it. Okay. Well, we are moving into our second public comment period. I don't know if we've had any emails solicited or, I mean, received, if anybody's queued up.
So far, I've only received one, and she asked that I read it on her behalf. It's from Michelle Fennigle. Can you hear me okay?
I can, thank you.
The question is, what criteria was used to determine a Tuesday, Thursday, and Wednesday, Friday schedule? It makes more sense from a deep cleaning perspective and lessening cross contamination to have a Monday, Tuesday, A group, deep clean on Wednesday with no students in the building, and then Thursday, Friday, B group.
Appreciate the feedback. We'll certainly take that into consideration. I know that the groups are still discussing plans and I'm, I'm sure that's part of the conversation.
I've received no other, but I'll keep refreshing.
Okay, we'll, we'll just give it about another minute here.
While we're waiting, can I ask a question about that? We did, you know, get the email today with the district's initial reopening plan. When people get the feedback to the right people? I don't know who, like, like, should we say, is there a person that we should receive? Should they talk to their principals? Obviously, we can hear them, but we are, it's a little, a lane difference for us. So I guess my question is, how do we direct people? Because I think there's going to be a lot of feedback, perhaps?
Yeah, I'm going to guess that that's going to want to go to superintendent as, as a point person at least. But, you know, Scott's going to weigh in on that, I'm sure, with his preferences. And, you know, like, I, I know that there's a lot of sort of working, actively working groups kind of still getting ideas on the table, and they're reaching out to building sort of the communities that, that feed the buildings. So yeah, we'll have to see what happens. I, I don't know. Dan, I don't.
Yeah, I jumped on here. So if I can try to, try to answer that, at least in the short term. You know, for board members, I would probably, you know, acknowledge, acknowledge the email forward on to Debbie in the short term until Scott gets on board July 1. Some questions that are more HR related, I'm having my secretary Sandy Sprower field and kind of gather. So for you, for you, I would probably just direct them to Debbie and we'll get them sorted to the right person if they come to you. Any of the board members.
That makes sense. Thanks, Dan.
Okay, Debbie, any takers for public comment?
No other.
Okay.
Sue Ellen, raise your hand, Debbie.
She did. That's what I was told. I reached out to her to see if she had public comment, and I haven't heard that.
Oh, okay, good. And I heard from Paul that power went out in his entire neighborhood and he's reconnecting by phone.
Okay. Yep, pros and cons of technology. Okay, we are going to move to item 14, which is the close of the budget hearing. I, I don't believe actually we have to take any specific action on the closing. I think we just have to announce it. Is that correct, Steve?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. With that, we will move into our action item portion. There were five on the table. And, well, all but one, let's see, well, we just go through them one at a time. Action item A, to approve the resolution 6-22-2020, transfer appropriations in general fund fiscal year 2020, 2021. We of course got the explanation of that earlier. I would entertain a motion to approve that resolution.
Jonathan?
So Jonathan, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to. Just a question.
2020, to transfer of appropriations in the general fund fiscal year 21, 2021.
Thank you, Tom. You were breaking up pretty badly, but we, we got the gist of it. Go ahead, Steve. You were going to weigh in.
So this first one, item 15A, really is actually a separate resolution regarding this fiscal year, 1920. That just. that just we transfer some money in the general fund from support services to instructional services, and also some from contingency to instructional services. And there's a write-up in there, but some of that had to do with the well, there's just some reclassification between the two major categories, which is what we appropriate on. Because I think there was a few things budgeted in 2000 that should have been in 1000, but also because of the teacher contract settlement and some extra costs there. So that explains kind of the pulling from contingency. But typically, this is a resolution that's probably needed 90% of the time at the end of the year, just for some housekeeping.
Right, my my mistake. And I get what you're saying now. I was sort of just reading it. But I do know what that was for originally, and I should have caught that earlier.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Did all of you catch that on the board? I want to make sure that's clear to you. I understand what he's saying, and I and that's just a an oversight on our part, I think, on how it's worded in the in the agenda. You're muted.
So maybe we.
Sorry, yeah, I apologize. I didn't. I didn't see that that line item actually said 2020.
Sorry.
Yeah.
I missed it too. That's what I was saying. I missed it, and I just was reading it, of course, and didn't even catch it as I was saying it. So with that, with that clarity, Jennifer, did you have a question? Sorry.
Oh, I was gonna say that we probably need to restate the motion.
Correct. Thank you.
So could it just be, I'm I move that the resolution be adopted to transfer budget appropriations in the general fund?
For this fiscal year?
For 2019, 2020.
Yeah, yeah, that would be that would be correct, as stated at the bottom of page. I don't know if it's listed as page one or two when you click on the link there, but yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Thank you.
So moved.
I'll second. I don't know if I need a second for these.
Yes.
If we do, I'm happy to do that. Yes, Janet.
Yep, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Without further discussion, Debbie, why don't you go ahead and run the roll call, please?
Jonathan?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Janet?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Shelley?
Aye.
And Irv? I think we lost Irv.
Yeah, I don't see her anymore, so.
I'll send him an invite again.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, everybody. The next one, C, Resolution Adopting Budget Living Taxes Making Appropriations for Fiscal Year 2020-21. Would accept a motion to approve that one this week.
So can we be, can I just move to or say be it resolved?
You're breaking up something fierce, Jen. I can't.
Sorry, I just don't know. Is the can you hear me now?
I can now, yeah.
Okay, so the resolution, can I just read the top bit on the?
I think the text that's not.
The resolution, I don't have to say the tax. And now I can't hear you.
Well, you know, we got to end on this note. So I believe you can read it as worded in the agenda would be adequate and fine.
Okay, I will do that then, if I can find the agenda. Okay. Move. I move to approve the resolution adopting the budget, levying taxes, and making appropriations for the fiscal year 2020 to 2021.
So moved.
I second it.
Seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, with that, we'll take the the vote.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Janet?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Shelley?
Aye.
And still no Irv. Thank you.
Motion passes. Okay, C, Bethany's Charter School Contract. We had the presentation from Paul earlier on that and had a chance to ask questions. They recommend approval. We are, I would accept entertain a motion to approve the Bethany Charter School Contract.
I move to approve the Bethany Charter School Contract, July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2025.
I second.
And seconded.
All right, Jonathan. Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead. I think I think we can keep going. I I.
Getting a little itchy. Okay, Jennifer?
Aye.
Janet?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Shelley?
Aye.
And still no Irv. Thank you.
And now for Community Roots. I'll entertain the same.
I, I, this is Janet. I'll move to approve Community Roots Charter School Contract for July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2025.
I'll second.
And seconded. Did you catch who got that, Debbie?
I did. Janet and Jennifer. Okay, roll call. Jonathan?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Janet?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
And Shelley?
Aye.
Thank you.
Perfect. And last up is an item that Janet and I participated in regarding a consultant confer for the admin and confidential employees compensation and benefit package for the next year, 2020 and 2021. You've all had a chance, hopefully, to review that information. I would, at this point, accept a motion to approve that package request.
I move to approve the 2020-2021 Terms of Compensation and Benefit Package for Administrative and Confidential Employees.
I'll second.
Seconded. Without further discussion being requested, Debbie, why don't we take the roll call?
Jonathan?
Aye.
Jennifer? Jennifer, you froze. Thumbs up?
Aye.
Thank you.
There we go.
Janet?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
And Shelley?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we've wrapped up our agenda for tonight. Is there any further business for the board?
I do have a question. I know that after our last budget meeting, we discussed possibly having the budget committee continue to oversee changes as they may develop with the budget. Is that something that's more for the superintendent to have sort of his, I guess, sub-budget committee as we work with Steve? I remember it being discussed and having the budget committee, you know, just be informed as how things are developing, since this is a unique year. Do you remember?
Right.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, I think, obviously, you know, it's always a goal of mine to give new and pertinent updates at every meeting or work session that I possibly can, you know, like I did tonight. And I will continue to do so, including if there's a more than a day or two before the next meeting, I would send out an email and make sure people are informed. And and hopefully, budget committee members see either the meeting or the recording later on and some of the documents we put out. But I I think definitely be something to for Scott and the board to talk about what what that design, you know, could look like, because I think, you know, there's different ways to do it. I was in a previous district that had, it was called a finance work group. It wasn't an official committee committee, say, a board committee like Long Range Facility Planning is, for example. It was a, in this particular case, it was a group of three of the seven board members that we met. I met with them more informally on a quarterly basis and more often if needed, because they were board members that wanted to stay even more plugged in with the finances. And there were different work groups where, you know, people branched out to based on their kind of their, you know, their interests. But there's different ways to do it.
Oh, sure.
In terms of whether it be a committee or a work group, and that is an important delineation. But I think, you know, it'd be great to hear Kenwood, Scott, and would 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 vision there as well as as the board as we move into July. But certainly, while we figure that out, I will definitely make sure that people are informed of the latest and greatest. Or, well, yeah. Like I said, there's 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 ups and downs every day, right? With that.
Right, exactly. Well, I thank you for clarifying that, Steve, or thank you.
Absolutely.
I'd like to jump in. This is Janet. I wonder if we could commit Jonathan, and I know we've we've talked about it, but I think we can just keep keep it on the front burner so we don't forget that, you know, so sometime in July, either in a board meeting and maybe even at early August, or even as we're doing some training together, we could have those conversations about how we might form some sort of a an advisory committee or or a finance committee, finance working group. I like that idea, Steve. Thank you for that. But I think those are important conversations to have with Scott. And so I would just like to sort of get that on the record, that we did commit to the budget committee, that we would have some sort of a a model moving forward that was more collaborative and more integrated than it has been in the past. And so if we can commit to having those conversations in July and August, I certainly would support that.
Yeah, I certainly do as well, and help remind me if somehow it misses an agenda where it ought to be present, you know. But yes, I do agree. We ought to be having those conversations.
Excellent. Thank you.
Just lost my outdoor light. Sorry, guys. Somebody just turned it off on me. Okay, well, I will say in the dark, I guess that's my my cue to wrap things up. So without any objection, meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.